Connected to the virtual machine, you can start a virtual machine by clicking Start button, okay. You may use the video using the attack box or your own VPN connection. Later in the room, we will use a vulnerable application to perform nice. Let's uh open up VirtualBox. I'm ready to start the room. Few important concepts in this room. Hello. In this section, we will understand the fundamental concepts surrounding randomness and its role in security. Why did not change the title of the video? Randomness refers to the lack of pattern or predictive, lack of pattern or predictive predictability in data making it an essential component of secure systems. In cryptic, in cryptography, true randomness ensures an attacker cannot predict values such as keys, tokens, and nonsense. We will explore how randomness is generated and the distinction between true random number generation and pseudo random, pseudo random number generators. PRNG Entropy Entropy refers to the amount of randomness or unpredictability in a system and is and is often used to assess the security of cryptographic keys, tokens, and random values. High entropy indicates greater uncertainty, making it more difficult for attackers to predict or guess the values, which is essential for secure cryptographic operations. Low entropy can lead to weak security, increasing the risk of attacks like brute forcing or token prediction. Cryptographic keys Cryptographic keys are secret values using algorithms to encrypt and decrypt data, ensuring confidentiality, integrity, and authentication. They are, they are critical components in symmetric and asymmetric encryption methods, and must be securely generated and managed to prevent unauthorized access. The strength of a cryptographic key depends on its length and randomness. Session keys and unique identifiers. Session tokens and unique identifiers are used to maintain user sessions and track interactions in web applications. They must be securely generated with sufficient randomness and uniqueness to prevent token prediction and session hijacking. Carbon management and certification of these tokens are essential to ensure security. Seeding Seeding refers to providing an intentional value known as a seed to a secure cryptographic function to generate a sequence of random looking numbers. While these secure functions produce numbers that appear random, the sequence is entirely determined by the seed, meaning the same seed will always release in the same sequence. Entropy. No. Types of number, random number generators. TRNGs generate randomness by relying on unpredictable physical phenomena like thermal noise or radioactive decay. Since these generators stem from natural events, they produce inherently random values. TRNGs are commonly used in highly sensitive cryptographic operations, such as generating the key algorithms for RSA or ECC. These, these keys are then used in tasks like encryption, digital signatures, and certificate, certificate creation, where unpredictably, unpredictability is crucial for security. However, TRNGs require specialized hardware and can be slower than other RNGs, making them less suitable for tasks requiring rapid number generation. Trngs require specialized, specialized hardware and can be slower than other RNGs, making them. Non-deterministic transformation. As shown in the above figure, the basic workflow includes capturing a seeding value from a natural unpredictable physical source. This value is then fed into the, into hardware that, hardware that performs a non-deterministic transformation to generate a sequence of truly random unpredictable numbers. The output of TRNGs cannot be predicted or reproduced, making them ideal for high, high security cryptographic operations. Pseudo random number, number generation. PRNGs unlike TRNGs generate numbers algorithmic, algorithmic, algorithmically based on an initial seed value. While they appear, while they may appear random, they are deterministic, meaning the same seed will always produce the same sequence of numbers. PRNGs are faster and more efficient than TRNGs and are suitable, suitable for applications that quickly need large quantities of random numbers like simulations or gaming. However, since they are algorithmic, algorithmic, predictability becomes a risk if an attacker can deduce the seed or its generation method. We will examine the two types of PRNGs. Statistical and cryptographic PRNGs. Focusing on their differences and specific applications. Statistical PRNG. Statistical PRNGs are designed to produce numbers that pass statistical randomness tests, meaning a number is a pair random and lack obvious patterns. These generators are widely used in non-security applications such as simulations, statistical sampling, and gaming where randomness is required but not in a security critical context. However, statistical PRNGs are deterministic by nature, meaning the same seed value will always produce the same sequence of numbers. This predictability makes them unsuitable for cryptographic tasks where unpredictably, unpredictability is paramount. Cryptographically secure PRNG. A CSP-RNG is a former PRNG designed for cryptographic purposes. Where randomness must be unpredictable and resistant to attack, unlike statistical PRNGs, CSP-RNGs produce computationally infeasible outputs to reverse engineer even if some of the output or internal state is known. CSP-RNGs are critical and security sensitive applications including encryption, key generation, session tokens, and secure random number generation for protocols. These generators must meet stringent requirements to ensure their output cannot be predicted providing, providing strong protection against cryptographic attacks. While they may be slower than statistical PRNGs due to additional security measures, they are essential for ensuring the integrity and security of cryptographic operations. In the next task, we will explore how an attacker can exploit vulnerabilities in PRNG functionality to predict or manipulate supposedly random values. You prepare a game involving immediate interaction and random event simulation but with no critical security requirements. Which type of RNG would most be, would be most appropriate for this purpose? I would say. Um, PRNG B. Weak or insufficient entropy. This technique will cover a scenario where random number generation suffers from poor or insufficient entropy. As discussed earlier, entropy refers to the unpredictability or randomness in a system often derived from sources like environment factors, example, hardware, noise, or using interactions. When these entropy sources are weak or insufficient, the generated values, random values are not truly random and become vulnerable to our attacks. For example, if an encryption key is generated using low entropy data such as a timestamp, an attacker could use this predictable information to reduce the complexity of finding the key. Similarly, pro entropy, you, sources like system clocks, predictable, predictable user inputs can lead to weak randomness in applications. Practical scenario. In this scenario, an attacker can exploit the predictability of the entropy source to determine the values produced by the number, random number generator. We will see how weak entropy in the token generation leads to security vulnerabilities. We will be using a vulnerable web app hosted on HTTP random, okay. There's also a mail server configured on. This website, let's see if we can go there. Nah, alright. There's also a mail server configured on HTTP where the user, this link, where the user will receive emails to reset passwords or login with a magic link. The website provides a login feature and an option for users who have forgotten their password to request a reset link. In this case, the user with the username victim has forgotten their password, and our goal is to understand how password reset tokens are generated, and then they use the knowledge to achieve account takeover for other users. Follow the instructions below to observe the problem first and understand why this approach is insecure. Start by visiting the site. Enter the username victim in the text box and click on send reset link. Next, you will see a message indicating that the email containing a password reset link has been sent. Let's break down the server side logic that produces token below is the code responsible for generating the reset token. This token is simply a concatenation of the username in this case. And the current timestamp, timestamp provided, produced by the time function. Open the mailbox by logging in with the email victim at mail dot random dot THM and password testing at one, two, three. You will see the, you will see the password reset link like this. Yeah, I should probably um open my VM real quick, let me turn it off. I think I might delete one of my VMs because I didn't think I needed it. Which might be like, might be fucking need in the ass right now. Cause I actually wanted to download a game. Whoa, that was bad. But uh. Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna do it over here, I'm just keeping my other monitor. Yeah, that's everything I found. Man, I'm gonna get my teammate to download Linux, bro, he's gotta do that shit. Oh, that's, oh, that's nice. I, I, I didn't even see that. That's, yeah, they're PRNG vulnerabilities, man, I. Um, pseudo random, yeah, pseudo random number generation vulnerabilities. That's fucking interesting. Honestly don't like using Brave, bro. I'm starting to think I should have kept Firefox. Man, Brave is just fucking shit. Brave just moves slow in the VM, bro. It's moving like fucking, moving terribly. I don't even gonna update this shit. I need, I just need to get this lab over with. You know, we need to finish a lab a day. That used to be the goal, is finish a lab a day. I got all this time to finish a lab a day. I can't even finish one lab a day. You know, I should be. That's the, I'm talking about, I'm gonna start to grind up, bro. Like, like I'm still gonna try and play my games and watch my show, shows because that entertains me and all that, but. Man, I, I gotta, I gotta make something shake, you know? Seriously, cause. Hang on, hold up. Alright, so uh. Man, I'm just a loser. Fuck, I gotta stop saying that dumb shit, not right now. Alright, uh. Alright, alright, alright. A nigga is feeling lazy. I don't think they should be able to see that. I'm not even sure. Yeah, that should be good. What, fuck, uh, password is incorrect. I'm wondering if I just leaked my password on that. It's whatever, cause I could just change it and I got 2FA on my shit anyways. Like, I can't even get into my own shit without 2FA. But still, it would be nice not to do some shit like that. You know, I mean, it's not like a password that I commonly use, the password that I only have for this account. Cause that's bad security practices, never reuse passwords. If you can. Never reuse your passwords. Enable 2FA on all your accounts. That's basic account security, guys. On the user end, of course. I am fucking loser. Alright, alright, alright. Wait, my level went down? Yo, my level went down cause I haven't been grinding, bro. What the fuck? Oh wait, no, they just added new ranks, bro. They just added new ranks, that's just it. That's just it, they, they added new ranks. I thought for a second, like, I really just didn't, I was really like off the grind, bro. I mean, I haven't been grinding like I used to. But still, man. Shit, you know? I gotta get back on the fucking grind. I should have been at five hundred rooms completed on it. If I'd really like, at least put some work in, but. As I said, man. Nothing happens if nothing happens. Or nothing changes, nothing changes, is one of the things, that's, I just fucked up, I fucked up. But at least there's some time to fix it. I kept, I should have kept, uh, studying, gotta clean my hands now. My napkin. But uh. Yeah. Sido, open VPN. You know, like, I, my, my dad was gonna be happy. I just wanted to make people proud and uh, I didn't, cause I wanted to do other things. I wanted to troll people and that's what ruined my life. Cause I'm a dumbass. Just lock in, bro, lock in for the rest of these, these months of school. You know, we graduate, not even six months, bro. We got three months of school left, bro, three months, bro. Twelve weeks of school left. Oh shit. I see. So. Just gotta go ahead and try to lock in, bro, but uh. I just, I don't know. I feel so empty. Like, I just like, like, I don't know how to explain it right now, man, I just feel fucking empty. I just feel like. Like I feel so dead inside. Cause I just wanna sleep all the time. I'm not even grinding, bro. Like, that's the bare minimum, bro, is just to grind. I'm a loser and I'm not even, I think I could just slack off and play video games. Man, what the fuck is wrong with me? Alright, so GitLab Community Edition. I don't think I was gonna end stream, I shouldn't be talking myself out loud. Alright, so uh. This is something completely different. Wait, is this actual GitLab or is this a joke? I'm quite interested. Nah, they wouldn't copyright. Brother. Uh, stick it in my fucking butt, brother. Stick that cockadoodle doo in my booty cheeks, nigga. Yo, what type of faggot ass cheesy wonk nigga? An exploit. What? Bro, I don't see that link, I don't have that link, bro. That's, I'm lost, bro, oh wait, it says port eighty ninety, dog. Okay, eighty ninety. Uh, nothing on a server, but there's definitely on, there's definitely a webpage on this uh, port and IP. Never mind, there's nothing on this motherfucker. Fuck me, dog. Well, fuck me. Wait, never mind, slash case? Oh my gooseness, I'm fucking legendary. Goddamn. God, fucking damn. Oh, so it wants me to go to Unix timestamp. You go to Unix timestamp? And you get the fucking timestamp. Alright, that's, that's how you do it. So uh, first step? I should note this down. Oh man, I just feel. I'm gonna get back on my grind, bro, I'm telling you, I'm gonna get back in my fricking grind, bro. I'm gonna grind what matters, you know, school, studying, not playing any more games, I don't wanna do it no more, I gotta, gotta make something happen. Why the token is weak, weak entropy in token generation, in this case, the system relies on low entropy sources like username and tie send. Which token predictable, high entropy generally weak, are generated using secure random number generators. Random underscore bicep produce values would hide the degree of unpredictability. Using predictable sources like time does not provide sufficient, sufficient entropy, making it easy for an attacker to narrow down possible token values. Even though the type, timestamp changes every second, this predictable increment does not contribute to strong entropy. An attacker could run a brute forcing attack known as, known, using known timestamps within a specific time window, such as within a minute or two for no one. When the token was generated. A small search base. The second major weakness comes from the limited search space, and the search space reverses the total number of possible values a token could take. A larger search space makes it exponentially harder for attackers to guess or brute force to correct token. However, in this case, because the time function updates every second, the search for brute forcings for token is very small, an attacker could simply guess all the possible timestamps within a short range, say within the last five or ten minutes. While completing the exercise, make sure to refresh the Unix timestamp page to get the latest timestamp. Right, so, first we're gonna log into the login page, my nigga? Bro, I gotta finish this shit before ten o'clock, I gotta grind. Uh, where's the plug? Alright. Right there, password, 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 password. Password, password, right there, I log in. What, no login? Oh, it's not supposed to work. Forgot password, username is victim. Reset link. Now we get the Unix timestamp. Where's the exploit, where's the exploit, where's the exploit, where's the exploit? Where's the exploit? Timestamp? Uh, what else do we do with the exploit, where do we get the Python exploit? Oh, okay. This is right here. I mean, it's a very simple fucking exploit, I could have made this shit. But I mean, I'm not gonna go out of my way to make something that's already been made. I should uh. Change some part of it though. I have used nano in a fucking hot minute, bro. Alright. I just remembered. You know what, I think I'm just gonna do. I'm gonna put t. And. Sido nano slash Etsy slash host. Kelly. Uh, find the fuck out of here. I remember when I used to fucking grind. That's the fucking good days. When I wasn't wasting my damn time, my life, playing fucking video games. Even though I fucking suck at them. I believe it's somewhere around like the eighties, I'm not gonna stop it. Wait, never mind, this is fucking wrong, this is not gonna, this is never gonna fit. Alright, uh. Let's do fucking seventy, bro. For sake keeping. Oh, this is fucking insane. Like, oh, this is next fucking level, dog. Hold it, uh. Let's refresh this page. Just type in victim and. I would say let's give it. Let's do like eighty seven. What? Everything? Oh, that's why. That's why. Did I fucking? sudo nano slash etc slash host. Kelly. Now we have the IP and fucking. Link, it's in my host file. So please tell me why the absolute fuck? It doesn't work. No, I bet it's not even working to the slightest, bro. Now that I think about it. What the fuck? Is my host file fucking wrong? I fuck with this. Style of doing that, see host file? It wasn't, what, what, what are you doing? I thought it was like. Fuck, man. Seventy, you don't do shit. Nevermind. I'm gonna try and follow, sorry, solved that. There's two things I could do right now. I could either just fix the script so that it works for my thing. Or I could just try to fix this fucking problem, my, my host file. This is the easiest way. This is the way I know works. If I'm taking the risk, I'm trying to learn something new. I should probably go to the, to be honest. Well, this shit does not fucking work. Dude, the script is busted anyways, like. I put, I put this number in, right? Tell me why in the world, why in the fucking world? We use these numbers, bro. Why put this script? The script is fucking broken. If we uh. I'll be honest, bro. This shit is fucking pissing me off. I gotta go to sleep soon, and I can't even finish this one room. Oh, hey, it did. Finally, thank you, thank the lord. See, actually I had to put it before, I thought it was gonna add numbers to it, didn't add shit. I'm uh. I didn't make the script, so I didn't know what the fuck the script was really doing, I never read the code either. That's probably why I took this. Man, this me watching Sigma and it's on the talk. But I'm trying to get on the talk right now. Here's my phone, I'm trying to get on the fucking talk.
Say that again.
I don't wanna hear this nigga. Yo, what the fuck? How did this nigga just do that shit, dog? I love TikTok, man, I'm happy I got this shit back. That's nice, that's nice, that's cool as shit. That's some cool shit, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'll let you, I'll let you sneak in. Look, look at that, look, look at that. Look, look at that. I'mma do it to her now. Oh god, no kissing, nigga. Oh, that's dark souls.
You guys believe that?
What's up guys, it's Mr. Pisser and I'm here with my friend Cooper and he's gonna untape my tape toilet. Yeah, let's go. We finally finna see what's under here. I don't know, maybe a couple of years? Let's see. Alright, bet. Right, you got that knife? Bad, let's go. Let's see. Toilet reveal chat.
Yo, my bad, bro. I just listened, just watching. What the fuck? This nigga's piss is fucking black. Yo, what the fuck? You, no brother, no. What the hell, man? It's some fucking weird shit. Yo, this nigga ain't human, bro. I didn't think humans could produce such things, bro, that's fucking weird. I should finish this one, I should finish this lab, shouldn't I? Oh yeah, this is easy. I'll finish it, let's finish it. I'm messing, we're gonna go to bed a little late today, ten fifteen. In this task, the focus shifts to the cases where a predictable seed is used to initialize PRNGs. If the seed is particularly predictable, an attacker can reproduce the entire sequence of random numbers leading to severe vulnerabilities in systems that rely on these random values. An example of the impact of predictable seeding is capture systems. Capture systems where the random value determining the capture. Random value determining the capture challenge will be generated to detect a bot activity. If the seed used to initialize the PRNG is predictable, an attacker can predict the capture values ahead of time without allowing them. Oh shit, I didn't know, that's another capture bypass. That's another capture bypass. Determining the capture challenge will be generated to, we. Determining the capture challenge will be generated to detect a bot activity. The seeds used to initialize the PRNG is predictable, an attacker can predict the capture values ahead of timeline and bypass the capture and access restricted areas of the application without solving it. Issue also manifests in systems like lottery, like lottery game, lottery or game applications or PRNGs determine the outcome of random jars. When these generators are seeded with predictable values such as timestamps, attackers can manipulate the system by predicting the outcome and ensuring they will win consistently. By exploiting the predictable PRNG seed, the attacker can reverse engineer or replicate the same random sequence as breaking the system's finish. In this scenario, we will explore how using predictable seeds to generate tokens in magic, in a magic link system can lead to account takeover in a magic link. If tok- token is generated using PHP's MT underscore rand function, which is seeded with a combination of the CRC thirty-two value of the user's email address and a random constant. By analyzing these token generation processes, the attacker can reverse engineer the seed and predict valid tokens. He's a stranger. I don't know why I fuck you. I, 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 blah, blah, blah. Baby girl. Baby girl. I will give you the world.
Bro, I just seen the video so real, bro. The man said, your funeral is gonna be way more pain than your birthday. He said, people rather see you on your back than rather see you on your feet. Legit, like, bro, let that shit sink in your mind and really think about that. You don't get no phone calls, you don't get no checkups from people, at all. But it seem like when you die in the past, it seem like majority of people don't talk to you now. That's when they really, really knew you when you go to your funeral. I don't understand how it can be love when you die, but it's like when you here, I'm here right now. Why the fuck, I'm, I'm not getting the same attention? Like, it's so backwards to me, bro, and it's like, it, it bothers me so bad, bro, to the point where it's like, motherfuckers will treat you dead while you alive. But they'll treat you like you alive when you dead. You get treated like you in the fucking ground, bro, when you alive, man, you ain't getting no calls, no texts.
We got y'all, we won't be no trouble. Remember, don't call the cops, just call up.
I see in your eyes.
I ain't got no hero, that's. Ain't nobody in the world can tell me different about myself. I know I'm ugly to women, internet.
Fuck outta here. You're not a teenage white girl. Oh shit.
So Shaquille, you telling me you wear a size twenty-two? I wear a size ten. You wear a size D, you walk around like these, they wear what? Ain't no way. You walking in like this, feet long, just like this. Can't be no way, man.
Guys, I just hate them.
Alright folks.
This school shit is dead.
There's so much I wanna say. But I don't know where to start.
I'ma lie to my fuck.
Oh my god.
Oh, hell no, man, what the fuck, man?
Get your ass on, boy.
I'ma lie to my fuck.
I don't really care.
But you, you don't really?
I put my phone down so orally. What the fuck is wrong with me, dude? Man, I just got TikTok back in fucking hell. I got a couple fucking scrolls in, didn't I? God fucking damn it. Shotty. Shotty, shotty bad. Shotty bad, shotty, shotty bad. Shotty bad, shotty bad. Shotty very, very good, very, very, very damn yard. Shotty is short damn yard, she short fucking damn yard. Oh my good, shotty is short fucking damn yard. What the fuck? What the fucking wrong with you bitch nigga? Are you fucking stupid? Dude, fuck with me, nigga? I need to find that, I need to find that audio. I need to find that fucking audio right now, man. Are you a street nigga from the suburbs? Are you a street nigga from the suburbs? Bro, niggas wouldn't laugh at it. Eh, man, I think. Bro, I don't think I'm making it, bro. Bro, I don't think I'mma make it, bro. I, I just wanted to like. Bro, I wanna do some shit, bro. Yeah, I just realized, that nigga really hated on me, bro. What a faggot, I mean, oh wait, oh shit. I can't say that. Well, what a, what a person of homosexuality. Man. The use of PHP's MT underscore rand underscore rand function weakens the security of the system and the end screen as a shooter random number generator. It's that this output is entirely determined by the seed. Once the seed is known, all subsequent outputs can be predicted. Decoding the token to predict what he attacked, we need to decode. So in place of B sixty-four encoded in the input field and decode. Once we have the decoder B, yes, there's a decoder one. There are restrictions for the services of an attack. The primary tool we'll be using to exploit this is PHP. Is, uh, the open wall. Open wall. Open wall, the wall is open, oh my god! Um, okay. So, uh, this tool specifically downloads the seeds of PHP's MT underscore rand function based on the output of the random number generator once you provide. You can learn about the technical definition of methods here. An updated version of PHP MT underscore seed is already in your tech box. Inside the rooms is your directory. If you're not in the tech box, you can download this version from here. Alright, 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 alright. I fucks with it, I fuck with it. I fuck with it. It's so ubiquitous in K and, and the mad. The mad, the fucking the bad. Listen up, yeah. I told you fucking now, you stupid nagger. They fuck with me and my family. Oh, that's your fucking daddy. Hey, hey, hey buddy, hey, hey, hey. Hey, 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 ah, 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 ah. What the hell? You, 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 you. What the, my voice is echoing, man, I'm telling you, I live in a fucking. I live in Hotel Transylvania, what the hell, my nigga? What the hell? Yeah, look at my hair shake, cause it's so awesome. Okay, so yes, oh, 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 yes, oh, yes, oh, 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 yes, oh, yes, oh, 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 yes, oh, yes. Yo, I'm generally starting to fucking flip out. Nice knowing ya. It was nice knowing ya, dog. It was nice knowing ya. Shit, son, yo, son. A nigga just wants to be, you know, a widow dolphin, son. I just wanna be a widow dolphin. That's it? You just downloaded from here and then you beat me. Yo, I just thought about something that's fucking hilarious, bro. Drinking my teacher's fucking drink on his coffee mug. User resulting to you. I'm trying to fucking goon right now, my nigga. Bro. I'm fucking chopped. What the fuck dog? Niggas need to lose weight though. Niggas need to get bitches on their Johnny bro, that's what I need to do. I mean like absolutely no butt is fucking terrible. Fucking terrible. This is what no butt does to a man. Telling you bro. You must not go without this. I think it's illegal for me to go without this much butt for this long bro. I think it might be like fucking illegal, I think it might be against like the law. Like I shouldn't, I shouldn't. Niggas should deadass have like a lot more butt. If niggas don't get any butt in the next couple of months bro. Should I go ahead and fucking murder myself? Fucking. Wait do, what do I say again, don't you just say make or some shit like that? Yeah, you just say make. Make motherfucker, make. Make motherfucker. It's uh. It's been a long while there buddy. Niggas, niggas, niggas not jacking me cuz? Nigga, 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 nigga balls man. Nigga balls, nigga balls, nigga balls. Hey, don't you ever, ever, don't you. Ever, ever, goon, goon, goon. Ever, ever, goon, goon, goon. Yaba dabba, yaba dabba, weyaba yaba. Nigga I must goon. I must goon to all goon. We use this savage F for F for C. That we use this savage F for F for A. And then we subtract the number from the mother number and that way get the one thirty-seven. When we get the one three three seven, now we go and then do something else with it. Now what do I do with it? What is the constant? What is the constant? Yo, what is the constant? Would the constant be? Something can't be right what I just did. Something can't be right what I just did. I'm done. What? Oh wait, yeah, D. I was like, oh, all of us do look pretty bad. Initially before the key aspects of security randomness, I didn't even know the view. I mean, I'm done. I have a, I have a.